Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you, Full House. Glad to see everybody here. Welcome to the Monday, April 18th Stanley County Board of Commissioners meeting. Come in, have a seat, and you ain't got to stand in the back. Bear with me just a moment. County Manager Lucas has bombarded us with paperwork this week. I'd like to call this meeting to oral order and have Vice Chairman Almond give the indication and pledge allegiance.
Blessed pray. Father God, thank you for this time that you've given us today. Thank you for the freedoms that we have to assemble and the freedoms that we have in this country. We thank you for everyone who's here or present. Thank you for those who are being presented with our retirement awards. And God, we just thank you for all the folks who do all the hard work that they do for our county. God, I pray that our business tonight be uplifting and glorifying to your name and that we honor you in all that we do. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands the organization under our individual will never be seen of justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Fellow Commissioners, you all have the agenda before you. I'd like to seek a motion to approve it. Whoa, back up. Hold on, if you don't mind. Thank you, Commissioner Shudo. I'd actually like the board to allow me to add as item number seven, the memorandum of understanding and funding agreement for the UNC Emergency Management Training Center. So I'd like to seek a motion to approve the agenda with amendment seven as that and the consent agenda pushed to number eight.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Shudo. Second by Vice Chairman Almond. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Motion passes. Item number one tonight is retirement award presentation. We're being blessed to have quite a few award presentations lately, and I'm quite glad of that. Although I hate that it means that we're losing good people. I would like Commissioner Eifert to give the first presentation.
All right, the first one is for Ms. Angie Hegler. She said, "Angie begun her career with Stanley County EMS in 1992. After a short stint away in the 911 communication world, she returned to EMS and climbed through the ranks to an assistant shift supervisor in 2009 and has spent the remainder of her career with Stanley County. Angie is one of the last remaining old-school medics." I don't know, at 52, I don't know if you can be old-school or not, but we have begun her career in the 90s. She has brought a wealth of knowledge and many years of experience to the new generation of medics. Angie was a go-to person to get the business done and never would shy away from any task given. Angie was always one who would tell it like it is, and if you wanted her opinion, she'd be prepared because she would definitely go and give it." I think that's an Eifert thing there, I believe. I'm not sure. Angie has been and always will be inspiration to others, as evident with her son, who has carried on the EMS tradition. We'd like to wish her well as she and her family enter the new chapter in life. And talking about Angie's work ethic, I think she got that from her mom and dad. Doris is back there now, and her dad Keith, that passed away. They had a strong, strong work ethic. Worked multiple jobs for a lot of years, so congratulations, Angie. We certainly wish you the best.
Ms. Angie, could I get you to come up here toward the desk and just stand up here at the podium, if you don't mind? I meant to say that before we started, but now while we're at it, how about Mr. Jeffrey Craven? Is he in the room tonight? Why don't you come up here and join Ms. Angie, so she's not in the spotlight. I get the pleasure to present this one. Mr. Jeffrey Craven, he entered this profession in 1992 and came to Stanley County EMS in 1997. After climbing through the ranks, he was promoted to shift supervisor in 2006. And I'm not the one that keeps using the word "old-school," by the way, but Jeff was certainly an old-school medic, but was always able to adapt that knowledge and experience to the new age of medics. Jeff has always affectionately been known for his strength and his fast way of talking. Jeff was a true believer, and if he told you something one time, he never needed to repeat himself. Jeff has also been very active in the volunteer fire service. Currently, he's chief of South Side Fire Department. He leads that department as he has always led his EMS shift with a strong work ethic and grounded morals. He's sharing his legacy with his two boys, as they are typically in his shadow. We know he'll spend a lot of time with the fire department, along with his boys, and most importantly, working for the real boss, his wife. Jeff will certainly be missed, but we will wish him and his family the best as they enter this new chapter. If you guys would stay up there a minute. Fellow Commissioners, I'd like you guys to join me down there so we can give this presentation. Ms. Angie? Could you come join us first, ma'am?
This is presented to Angie E. Hegler for faithful and dedicated service to the citizens of Stanley County on the occasion of her retirement. We extend our sincere appreciation for your service and wish you even greater achievement and reward in the near future. Presented this 18th day of April, 2022. Stanley County Board of Commissioners.
Congratulations.
We very appreciate it.
That's not long, Paul.
Mr. Charlie?
You have mine? God, thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Jeffrey? Now, I don't know you that well, so was the fast-talking part a joke? Was everybody else laughing?
No.
I know about the same thing. Jeffrey Craven, for faithful and dedicated service to the citizens of Stanley County on this occasion of your retirement, we extend our sincere appreciation for your service and wish you even greater achievement and awards in the future. Presented the 18th day of April, 2022. Thank you for your service. Second. Don't smile. I'd like to thank you very much. Don't smile. Thank you. I really wish we got to do things like that every single meeting, but I also wish it didn't mean that we lose great icons in our community to do it. So, thank you guys again for your service. I had someone give... The public comments section is empty tonight. If there is anyone in the room that did not get the opportunity to sign up for public comments but would like to speak, please come forward and let me know. I do not see anyone, okay? I want you to know that Bill Longhan tried to skip your presentation tonight. No, he did not, ma'am. I don't know how to properly introduce you, Ms. Debbie. I feel like you need to just applaud in advance. Right. Presenting! Debbie Bennett, the Public Health Educator with the 2021 Community Health Report. Ms. Bennett, you're the only lady in the county who I cannot in good conscience put a time clock on, so we're at your mercy, ma'am. Go for it.
My name is Debbie Bennett. I am your Public Health Educator with the Stanley County Health Department, and I am thrilled tonight to be able to present to you just a snippet, because this report is 220 pages long.
Thank you for not reading all of it.
You're quite welcome, but some night when you can't get to sleep, this may help you. It would keep me awake, but for a lot of people, this report may be too much, but I'm telling you, it is filled with wonderful, helpful information. So, let's get started. Hang on to your chairs. Information included in this includes information from our survey, which we had 1,015 people participate in between January 14th, February 14th, 2001. We also have information about focus groups. We sat down with six different groups. During the pandemic, we met face-to-face. I scoured everything. We had masks. We had... We did everything except spray people to make sure nobody got sick, but we got some great information. I like to consider this meat on the bones. The survey gives us the bones. This gives us the feelings, the actual being. And we got data. Oh my goodness gracious, we have data. If you like data, you will be in data heaven. First set of data coming up. Some of the quality-of-life questions that they had were jobs and opportunities. People in Stanley County thought we could do better, but I'm here to tell you, I have gone out with Candace Lauter. I have gone out with different people. I have listened to different councils. Jobs and opportunities are coming here. They're here. They're starting to come here. Businesses are coming. Businesses are expanding. Folks, anybody who wants a good job will be able to get a good job. That's going to be... I mean, even now, people can access that. But as we go out and hunt for jobs, we've got to remember, what do we do well here? People said raising children here is great. Growing older here is great. Healthcare is available, and this is a safe place to live and have your family. We can't lose that. Now, this is old data because the state has not given me any new. I checked this morning, and it was still 2015, 2019. I'm assuming COVID took all their time, because this should be 2016 to 2020, but it is not. But heart disease, cancer, all sites, that's usually our one and two. Alzheimer's disease has been our number three. These are the top five causes of death. There are 19 that the state follows. All other unintentional injuries, and that includes burns, falls, unintentional poisoning, drowning, suffocating, anything that is not an unintentional automobile accident or truck accident. And then chronic low respiratory disease. Now, just to give you a good idea of how well we're doing or how we could improve, I've taken one, heart disease, cancer, Alzheimer's, and all other intentional injuries, and put together trend charts, and you can see with the heart disease, we're beginning to trend downward. That is good news. We're still above the state, but we are trending downward. Cancer, all sites, my goodness gracious, this is wonderful news. If you can see that, we are just dramatically trending downward. That is great news. Alzheimer's disease, we're not doing quite as well as we would hope we would be doing. We're trending upward. Yes, it's because we're an older population, but we are trending upward, and we need to be aware of that and be aware of what needs will happen, will be needed to accommodate folks that have issues with dementia. And our all other unintentional injuries, that is trending upward, too. So we've really got to take a good look at what's causing that. So there's... Those are the only ones we're doing in our report. Our issue categories include health, access to... Access to is a new one, because we had that included in the community, and UNC came down and said, "Folks, you could do this better." And so we did. We separated that, and they were correct. So it's health, access to, and community. And then we further broke those down into overall. What did people see overall? We also divided it into zip codes, north, south, east, and west. And one of the things that I have been doing is going to each city or town council and giving them their own data, because we could break it down according to zip codes. But in the report, it's just north, south, east, and west. Sex, male, female. Racial identity, age, from 15 to whenever. 15 was the lowest age we allowed to participate in the survey. Education, those that didn't graduate from grade school to all those that went to have doctorate degrees. Marital status, single to widowhood. Household income, under $10,000 to over $100,000. We have it all, folks. We have it all. Now, there's 20 overall health issues. I'm just giving you the top five. Substance use disorder, overdose, obesity, overweight, tobacco use. Those are usually our 1, 2, 3s. Mental illness, that has been a concern in the past for our youth, but as a result of COVID, there is now a concern more about adults. One of the things that was really difficult to balance during COVID was the loneliness factor. That can cause death, and that was made very clear during COVID, and mental illness and problems like that. So we had to be able to balance safety precautions and mental health issues. A real balance there. And inactivity and lack of physical activity. Just to give you a hint of what to see in our appendices, this is just the top five, not the top 20. You can see overall, east, north, south, and west, basically, they're all alike, except north, putting diabetes and heart disease at four and five. Overall, access to issues, there are 10. Again, substance use disorder, treatment, adult daycare, healthcare specialists, mental health services, dental care, adults. When I'm out in the community, I'm asked three questions usually. One is, "When y'all going to get dental care for adults?" Because we've got the best pediatric in the... I think in the state, because UNC sends their students, their dental students here. So we're doing something very good here. Second one is mammograms. How do we get money for those? And the third is adult daycare. If any of you have had a situation where you've had an adult daycare, it's 18 and older. People can have an 18-year-old that may have been in an accident and has brain issues now because of that accident, where they need a place to stay during the day. Or it could be somebody with dementia, or someone with cerebral palsy. It doesn't matter. Those are things to look at. Overall, community issues, unemployment, underemployment, and I'm here to tell you, I think unemployment, underemployment is going to be a thing of the past, and that will take care of, two, poverty; three, lack of or inadequate health insurance; four, crime; and five, homelessness. Employment will help take care of those other issues. Other sections in this report includes focus groups, insights, COVID prevention questions. Have people had the recommended screenings that they need to make sure they're healthy? What are barriers to accessing services? What are responses to folks when there's an emergency situation? Why will they not respond? Because there are people that you won't budge them, and we have answers to some of that. Now, this report is required by the state, but the Health Department takes this information and puts together three health priorities. Partners in Health were the initial ones who looked at all the data, all the discussion, and said, "These are the three that the Health Department needs to zero in on: substance misuse and overdose, healthy living, and mental health." And then we went to the Consolidated Health and Human Services Board, and they agreed. These are the three areas, the three priorities, the Health Department will zero in on. That does not mean we will be the lead agency. We may be supportive, because we cannot be the lead agency on all these, but we can be supportive. But these are the areas where we need to spend our time, and we will spend time on the other ones that aren't on here. These are where we're going to spend the most of our time. There is a community resource list in this book that is just to die for. It not only has health information, it has our parks. You're going to talk about those tonight. I'm here to tell you, the parks are wonderful. I've been hiding shoes. I've been hiding butterflies. I have been seeing families out there playing and having a great time. People just walking, and oh, I'm telling you, the parks are where to be. They look like everybody's having fun. But we also talk about the museums and art. We have all these resources in there. And I would like to spend just a few moments on two areas. One is Project Lazarus, and this is Stanley County Health... Well, not the Health Department. Stanley County's. This is their combined effort to address the substance misuse problem in Stanley County. And I'm going to talk a little bit about Jennifer Layton. She's the one, and I recall her early years, where she, I'm sure literally, beat her head against the wall trying to bring the different groups that were working on this problem together, because everybody was working on it, but they were working on it in their silo. The treatment, the prevention, the harm reduction. Everybody knew it was a problem, and they were trying to fix it, trying to deal with it, trying to address it. She brought in Project Lazarus, and people came together. If you ever, ever, ever have a chance to go to one of these meetings, you need to. It is amazing to listen to all these different groups now talking amongst themselves, saying, "Here's what we're doing. Here's what we need. We can help you on this." You cannot address the substance misuse problem here by yourself. This has got to be a community effort. Project Lazarus is this opportunity to have a community effort. It is exciting to hear what people are doing, and the ship is turning around. We still have a drug problem here. Make no... We can't fool ourselves, but we're no longer number one. I don't think anybody up there was proud to say, "We're number one in the state of North Carolina for drug substance abuse." The ship is turning around. Now, the resource Jennifer brought in, a million dollars. Whoa, that really opened up things, opened up areas, ways to help people. There's more money coming down. There's more ways to help people. This is going to be an ongoing process, but it's exciting that we have a way to address it as a group, as a total. Adult Day Healthcare, you have the Care Cafe that helps out for a couple hours a week. You have assisted living, and you have the nursing homes that help 24/7. We're missing the in-between, where people don't... They... Care Cafe can't help them anymore, but they really don't need to be in assisted living or nursing home. We now have an answer to that, the Stanley Adult Care Center. And let me say upfront, I'm on that board. So I'm a strong advocate for it, because I'm putting my time in it, and my time is precious, like y'all's. So the Stanley Adult Care Center is going to provide care five days a week, from like 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning till 6:00 or 7:00 at night, so people can go to work, so they can have a life. But it's also so the people who go there have a life, that they can sit there and communicate with their friends, play, cook, because there will be some cooking. There's all kinds of activities that they can participate in that will keep them stimulated. They're not sitting at home watching TV. They are actively engaged, and I find that exciting. We're now incorporated. We've got two buildings. We've hired an executive director. It's going to be a little bit of time, but it is coming, and that is what excites me the most, is this county, these municipalities. There is a can-do spirit that just oozes through everything. It just flows through our blood, and that is exciting. And if you folks aren't excited about this, excited about it, you need CPR, because it is just too good to be true. We don't wring our hands when there's a problem. We say, "What can we do to address this?" We have answers to problems. We have answers. You all are in a great position to help with those answers. You've got to be excited for what you do. You have got to be excited. I know I'm excited for what I do, and so I expect everybody else to be. And on those days when you really want to know what's going on in Stanley County or what people think, this report is on the Health Department's website under Quick Connections or on the Stanley County website. And I know you all are thrilled that this is done, but I am to tell you, thank you for the opportunity to come before you, and if you thought that was great, I have for you this presentation... I'm left-handed, so always go to the left. And I have the Reader's Digest version of the Community Health Assessment. Thank you so much. Happy reading.
Thank you, Ms. Debbie. Don't go anywhere just yet. I've got a couple of questions for you. While she's passing that out, if any fellow Commissioners have a question, y'all can pose yours, too, but, Ms. Debbie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I was... I sat in the Board of Health meeting the other night, and I was going to do this during Commissioner comments, but it makes more sense right now, because it's Jermaine. I realize that opioid abuse and misuse and overdoses are still one of the number-one things on our list to improve on.
Oh, number one.
But I want people to understand how far we've come in such a short time. If I recall what... I believe the name is Mike Chandler. Is that correct? EMS guy the other night? Mike Campbell. Please forgive me. Mike Campbell. He was given the numbers for what some of our preventive strategies have done, and I think the opioid overdose calls have gone, if I'm not mistaken, a year from 86 calls a month to 12?
In this report, I've got the data from him.
You've got the numbers from him?
So, yes. Just their peer counselor program is wonderful.
The peer counseling program, the community ambulance program. I mean, the things they've done, 80-some calls a month to 12. And they said the 12 is truly the same four or five people. I mean, you know, they have made a massive impact.
And you've got peer counselors who are going into the harm reduction. This... What's so exciting is with Project Lazarus, is all these people are getting together that are addressing this problem, and they are talking about it, saying, "How can we do better? Where can we do better? Where do we need help? Where do we need some funding? What suggestions do you have?" They're working as a team to address this. That's what I find exciting.
I asked Mr. Campbell at the last Board of Health meeting. I said, "Rather than have us come up here and give a synopsis, I'd love him to come and give that presentation he gave to the Board of Health, the Board of Commissioners, because I think the information was amazing." So, thank you guys for all you're doing.
We're winning. And we don't say that often enough. When we do something well, we go, "Oh, we're doing it well," and keep going, and we always zero in on the problems. Be aware of the problems, but when we're doing something well, a pat on the back is good.
Yes, ma'am. Any more comments from Commissioners or questions, Ms. Debbie?
I have a question. Yeah. Debbie?
Yes.
Who heads up Project Lazarus? Who's the key person that heads it up?
Wendy Grocock is the one that makes sure everybody gets contacted, does the minutes. She's the one... She took over Jennifer Layton's position.
So that's an internal group within the Health Department?
She is... She... In the Health Department, your health educators are in different areas, and that's her area that she deals with, is substance misuse.
She's kind of the coordinator, Commissioner.
Yeah.
But she coordinate with, like, Will's Place?
They're part of it.
And Cypher Communities and the...
Ridge to Recovery.
Ridge to Recovery.
They're all part of it. That's the beauty of it. It's community. It's not... There are groups in there you don't even know exist that are a part of this.
And how often do they meet?
I'm trying to think. COVID messed up a lot of things. I think they're meeting once a month again. I could be wrong. It could be every other month, but I think it's every month. And it's... If you have... You can have an opportunity. They meet online. You can be invited to participate. It's one of the best Zoom meetings, and I hate Zoom meetings. It's one of the best Zoom meetings I have ever attended, with all the interaction.
I know you're not necessarily on that one, but could you maybe make the request to let us Commissioners get an invite one time, and then if we choose to keep ourselves, you know, invited going forward, that'd be fine, but I would love to see it myself as well.
Okay. I'll ask... Not ask. I'll tell Wendy that you all would like to do part of it.
Thank you, Ms. Debbie.
Okay.
Anything else, Commissioners? Thank you, ma'am. Next item on tonight's agenda is Commissioner Zach Almond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you guys know, we lost a special member of our community this past week, Mr. Josh Morton. Commissioners, I'm requesting that we name our conference room in the county staff office space after the late Commissioner Joshua J. Morton, Jr. Josh served as Commissioner, school board member, and at one time, he was a county attorney. Josh came from a long lineage of those in the public service space. Josh's father was the sheriff at one point and also represented Stanley County in the State House. I don't know if you guys knew that or not. Josh was a successful local attorney for 55 years. He served as the local GOP chair when Stanley County was a minority Republican county. It's tough to picture this, but if you investigate much Stanley County history, you don't have to go... to go too far back to see where if you were in the Republican Party in this county, you didn't have much say-so and you weren't going to get elected to much. Josh was pivotal in our county becoming a majority GOP county and Josh didn't just talk the talk, he was a real activist. Josh was active in his church and overall a great person. I had many great times with Josh and was glad to know him and consider him a friend. Again, I respectfully ask that we consider naming our conference room in the county staff office space after the late Commissioner Joshua J. Morton, Jr.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make that a motion.
We have a formal motion by Commissioner Longhan to name the, Zach, is it the manager's meeting room? The Josh J. Right. We're naming the manager's meeting room the Josh J. Morton, Jr. Meeting Room.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion by Commissioner Almond, I mean, Longhan, a second by Commissioner Eifert. Any further discussion on that topic?
I'm glad you clarified, so I figured, man, he's a, he's a tall man, are you going to leave that small room after him?
No, Mr. Morton had a big personality alley. That room would not be big enough right there. Any further discussion, commissioners? All right, we have a first and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, Commissioner Almond. Next item on tonight's agenda, Stanley County Parks and Recreation Grants Update. Presenter, Commissioner Peter Ruscudo. Now, Peter, you have to be as excited as Debbie.
It's on there. There's an icon in the top, top left, maybe the second one?
How do you get the full screen?
Uh, just go up there, it says, um, play.
I always forget.
Slide show.
There you go. Okay, this will be pretty brief. Anyway, just wanted to update you guys on where the money's spent and as Bennett just talked about, a couple of things. And health-wise, the obesity and inactivity are two of the issues in Stanley County that we can, and we can address and help out with, it's having places where people could go, things to do. Let's see. And you're our brand, as a reminder, our brand promotes a healthy lifestyle with our logo and we're the gateway to the awories, all that stuff. But here's an update. Boy, I hadn't been to, I've been to Jeff Shelton Park, but hadn't been there during soccer and baseball time. And I was like, we, we helped with the lights out there though. I think the couple of the lights were going bad and we helped do them. But there were hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people out there. I mean, look at the photos there you had, was it, you got four fields for baseball? The four baseball fields were filled up and I don't know how many soccer things they had going on. But they, with the little kids, they change them, the halves or something like that, but that place was packed. You know, so, and another thing to talk about is social aspect of COVID. This is bringing people together, you see all the folks out there. And that thing, they were one of the first ones, I believe, to complete the project because they, with it. New London, drove to New London around 11 o'clock last week and as I pulled in, a tractor with kids is leaving that park. And then what they're going to do is they're going to build a shelter in the woods. I did not even realize they had a dog park in there. But if you go into the woods, you'll see a dog park and you see to the bottom, right? I guess you're right, that's where they've already leveled the ground and they're going to build a shelter up there and they've talked about their shelters are utilized all the time. Golden Shoe, you talked about the Golden Shoe. This is over in West Baden and we partnered with the town of Baden for this and they're getting ready to, they're, they got it on its way, they got to start pouring the concrete to get it done. Oakboro District, District Park recently paved. They did that about in the last, within the last two weeks. As you see the sign there, please no cleats on the new asphalt. And if you look at that picture, the person walking up is our superintendent, Dr. Dennis, and he's also Coach Dennis, he coaches a team out there. And one thing, he said the benefit of that is that when he, when his kids get in his truck, all of a sudden the dust has disappeared. Because that whole area was, even where the cars are parked, that was all kind of like gravel and dust and even around the, where the bleachers are, that was all just soft, softer ground. You can see the kids pushing strollers in the picture there, so that's been, that's been a good investment for them. And that, that particular project for sure would not have been done if it had not been for our participation and for our co-op with it. Pete Henkel Park, they opened last week. I went, you look at the bottom, I went there, I think it was Tuesday or Wednesday night and they still had the, the ropes up and everything else and they still had the construction stuff there. Then Wanda called me, she said, I'm going to send you some pictures because they had opened up Friday and look at all the kids playing out there, getting exercise and all that stuff. And then we got, the last slide is Meisenheimer, Albemarle, Norwood and Richfield. Meisenheimer and Albemarle, they're probably going to finish their projects in the summertime. And if you look at the pickleball courts, the, what Albemarle's going to do, they're going to put wind screens and bleachers and stuff around there. And I had some friends up from Myrtle Beach and they played pickleball, I took them down there and they said that was incredibly nice, what they've done so far down there and they have the, the fence between the courts so you don't have to go chasing through the, and interrupt people's play. Richfield, their project is complete, they got new bleachers on the concrete slabs for spectators and players' benches, plus they improved the restrooms. And she says she's going to get the bills to you, Andy, here shortly. And Norwood's in the process of paving their multi-use course and re-lining the tennis course and they're going to include pickleball lanes, pickleball lines so people could play tennis and pickleball, not at the same time, but around. And that's pretty much, I just want to thank you guys for doing that for the year and I hope you feel that that's money that was well spent. Seventy-five thousand dollars of our money is going to end up doing like a quarter of a million dollars worth of projects to keep people healthy, keep people outdoors. And when people move to communities, you know, they don't look at, oh, what's the jail look like or all, you know, what's the sheriff's office or what's the 911 center? They look at things like schools and parks and recreation, things like that. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruscudo.
I think we need to have like a commissioners versus town council pickleball game or something, raise money for some good causes.
I'm all about dodgeball, yes. I go against anybody in dodgeball. I don't know how to play pickleball though, I have to, I mean, I still don't know what pickleball is, I have to look this up. Thank you very much, Commissioner Ruscudo. Next item on this evening's agenda, Commissioner Longham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to ask the Board to approve a proclamation making May the 5th, 2022 as the day of national prayer. This will mark the 71st year of doing that and I'm asking that we approve the resolution that's in your book, short resolution, again, making May the 5th, 2022 as the national day of prayer.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner, Vice Chairman Almond?
I'd like to approve the attached resolution. I'd like to approve the attachment.
We have a, all right, we have a motion to approve the attached resolution by Vice Chairman Almond. Second by Commissioner Fur. Any further discussion? All in favor, please aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, fellow commissioners, it passes unanimous. May 5th, 22, May 5th, 2022 will be the, be the national day of prayer for Stanley County.
Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Eifert.
We normally have a service on that day, May 5th. In the, in the past years, we've done it in front of the Government Center. This year, we're going to do it in the back of the Government Center where we have our concerts and our stages and stuff. So I'd love for you to come out and join us on the 5th at 12, 12 noon.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I might mention that I do know that this is held downtown in the Leonard Mayberry Park, which is across from Pinnacle Bank, across from Charles Brown's.
One Square.
Yes, Square. And it's at 12 o'clock noon also.
Okay, next item on tonight's agenda, presenter's going to be Andy Lucas. This is the memorandum, the memorandum of understanding and funding agreement for the NC Emergency Management Training Center.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You all have the memorandum in front of you and the, the funding agreement. This is related to the 28 million dollars that the county will be receiving from the state through the SCIF grant process. And that money will be used in partnership with the Department of Insurance and the North Carolina National Guard to construct the North Carolina Emergency Management Training Center here in Stanley County. And so this will be North Carolina's, Stanley County will be home to North Carolina's Emergency Management Training Center. Stanley County really is the, is sort of the fiduciary administrator of these funds, will be responsible for procuring land adjacent to the airport as well as constructing these facilities with the 28 million plus an additional 3 million, which is why there's a funding agreement between the North Carolina Department of Insurance and Stanley County, which you have on the dais in front of you. That is funding that the Department of Insurance received and they're passing through 3 million of that to us to help with the infrastructure for that, for that project. So total, it's 31 million that will be spent out there adjacent to the airport property for this new North Carolina Emergency Management Training Center, which will be really well-placed near the National Guard assets and all that they have out there, as well as the state's emergency management warehouse that's right there adjacent to the airport as well. And so just a really great opportunity for the county and Stanley County to become the home for North Carolina's Emergency Management Training Center. And what basically this will be is a place where volunteer fire departments from across the state and likely from other states will come. There'll be dormitories that'll be constructed on the site, classroom facilities and as well as other props that they can do to, to work on their training, whether it be swift water rescue or confined space, elevation, things of that nature. And so, you know, you'll have volunteer fire departments and others coming and staying in Stanley County. Obviously, there's a, you know, there's a, there's a sales tax and an economic benefit from the, the retail and other things that, that would, those, those folks will spend here. And so just a tremendous opportunity for Stanley County to be home to this, this training center. And we will, we will get started with this project here in the next few months as we, as we again begin to procure the land and start on the infrastructure, water and sewer and other things to, to these pieces of property. I'd be happy to answer any questions the Board may have. We are not, Stanley County will not operate these facilities. Again, we're just a fiduciary agent, the money's flowing through us, we'll, we'll purchase property, we'll, we'll be the entity that has the contract with the general contractor who builds these facilities, will pay the bills. But when it comes to operating it, that will be the North Carolina Department of Insurance and the National Guard. And so, so that, that's, there shouldn't be any, no one should be concerned, oh, kind of, you know, the county's going to build these things and then there's going to be no one to operate it. That's not, that's not contemplated as part of our responsibility. Simply, we are the fiduciary agent for the, for the funding. And so I'll be happy to answer any questions the Board may have before you take action.
Commissioner Longham?
Total funding again?
We're getting 28 million directly from the state through the SCIF grant process and then we'll get an additional 3 million from the North Carolina Department of Insurance funding that they receive that they'll pass through us. And that's that funding agreement that you have up there to take action on in addition to the MOU. The MOU is between Stanley County and the North Carolina National Guard and NC DOI funding agreement, because they're giving us 3 million of their money to help with the project, is just between us and the North Carolina Department of Insurance. So a total of 31 million and will be invested in infrastructure and facilities for this new Emergency Management Training Center.
If for some reason the cost exceeded that, would the county be on?
No, sir, no, sir. That, the, the, there's a section in there, I think it's Section F of the MOU that specifically outlines our responsibilities and there's a caveat in there that it's not our responsibility to cover. But basically, if there were cost overruns in the process or in the estimated cost to do it, the scope of the project would be, would be refined or it would be Department of Insurance, General Assembly, National Guard to identify other funding sources to, to be able to fund any gap. But we have no, no financial obligation to enhance or cover any cost overruns. Other questions? So taking action on both the, authorizing the chairman to be able to execute both the MOU and the funding agreement on your behalf.
Thank you, Commissioner. Go ahead, sir.
Are they going to be like a lease on that?
Yes, well, once the facilities are completed and we get a certificate of occupancy, we'll enter into a, a multi-year lease with the North Carolina Department of Insurance and National Guard to operate the facilities and, and they'll basically be over the facilities, they'll, they'll lease, they'll lease them from the county. It'll be county property, but they'll be, it'll be a long-term lease, very similar to the National Guard. I mean, in, in the, the National Guard leases land out at the airport for all of their facilities. Now, keep in mind, those are their, their facilities on leased land. This, in this case, it'll be both leased land and leased facilities that the guard will, guard and the Department of Insurance will lease from the county and that would be their responsibility to, you know, maintain them and operate them. It would, again, there will be no cost to the county, you know, they're, they're, they would have full responsibility to, to take care of the, the facilities once they're operational. You're welcome.
Any further comments from commissioners?
There are none, I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize me to sign and execute the memorization of understanding and the funding agreement.
Yes, sir, they, yeah, to authorize the chairman. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding of the North Carolina Department of Insurance in Stanley County and North Carolina National Guard and also the funding agreement between those agencies.
Thank you, Commissioner Eifert. We have a first, we have a second? Second by Commissioner Fur. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Last item is the consent agenda. You've all had a chance to look over that. If there are no?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ruscudo, second by Vice Chairman Almond. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Last thing is commissioner comments. Commissioner Ruscudo.
Just in the consent agenda, they had the town, we approved the town Norwood fireworks display. And just to let y'all know that April 30th, they're having the Arbor Day festivities down in Norwood, it's a fun day to go out there. And there's a lot to do in Stanley County if you just, just look. Down in Oakboro, they had BJ Hill was at the Cup and Cone, they had lots of, lots of folks down there, they have Food Truck Fridays, the first Friday of the month at City Lake Park. And I know that Scott over in Locust, when do you guys start your, your evening things? Y'all do a?
They have one.
Is that Fridays also or?
Yeah, they just, just on Saturday.
So there's a, there's a lot to do in Stanley County and so get out there and do it.
You can do food trucks on Fridays and what on Saturday?
The first, the first.
The first Friday of every month at City Lake Park. And they got music also.
We have anything that, uh, on Saturday.
Every Saturday, the first Saturday?
It's not every Saturday, once a month.
Okay, cool.
Mr. Barbie?
I'll pass, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Eifert?
Uh, one thing we had in our packet, the Keep Stanley Beautiful 2020 Spring Litter Sweep. Community volunteers are needed to keep Stanley beautiful. They have three opportunities, Saturday, April 23rd from 9:00 to 12:00 and 1:00 to 4:00. Then Tuesday, I don't know what day that is, 26th from 1:00 to 4:00. And Thursday, I'll tell you, Thursday, April 28th from 1:00 to 4:00.
It's like it's the next word on the page.
Yeah, I know what, I'm sorry. It is very important, I know, me and Tracy do a street at our church and, you know, people throw out a lot of stuff and, and, you know, I'm just surprised that they do, but it takes volunteers, it takes, you know, a lot of people, a lot of time to keep Stanley looking beautiful. And I would, if you have some time, I know several of us up here have, have done it in the past and I would get involved.
My last year, last year was the first year that I really knew about it and I got asked to do it. And I tell you what, you go out there with Lee Snuggs and Chris Branlet and his wife and they will make you feel old quick and they're twice as old as me and they're out there just running. And my mom and I and one other person I think did like 52.
like 52, straight down. I mean, you feel 15 trash bags in a mile. I mean, it's just, it's everywhere. So I, I have a bike ride that Saturday. I can't come this year on Saturday, but I'm gonna make it an effort to come on Tuesday. Did you steal that?
You should have in your packet, but that's.
I thought you stole mine. Commissioner Fur.
Thanks, sir. It's just a reminder again of two benefits that's coming up. The first one is gonna be for the Michael Dennis benefit. It's gonna be sponsored by the Red Knights Motorcycle Group, trying to raise money for his medical bills. Registration on it is at 9:30, and I believe kick stands up at 11 o'clock. Not really quite sure where it's going to, but it should be about an hour, hour and a half ride. The second one is, again, the Kerry DeEfer ride. It's gonna be at West Stanley High School on Saturday to 30th. Registration starts at 9 o'clock, kick stands up at 10. We're gonna be going to Cox's Harley-Davidson, be down there for about an hour, be coming back, be doing barbecue, lunch. I believe there's gonna be snow cones there, I believe. So everything, 50/50 on both places. If anyone's got a bike that they ride, or if they've got a custom rod, or a Jeep, or whatever, everybody is welcome to come and participate in this. So I invite everybody to come out, both of them, is for a worthy cause. For the Kerry DeEfer, everything stays at West Stanley. For the high school seniors, so it all stays local. And so I invite everybody to come out to it. Thank you.
So you set a bike that you ride, so Harley owners are not invited? Commissioner Lawhan.
I tried to get a ride the last time they brought this up, but never heard anything else about it. So I guess, I guess I'll just be out there.
Get you in there.
Yeah, okay. I do, Andy Lucas, our county manager, sent this email out to the commissioners last week about the planning department in conjunction with Central Atlanta consultant. They've launched a community survey to get information from citizens about their priorities around future land use plans. There's a survey site that's on this email. I used it and sent it out on Facebook, but I don't have 65,000 Facebook friends. But I hope that our citizens will hear about this, do the survey, because, and I must speak publicly, I don't want Stanley County, especially the outlying areas, to become a union county subdivisions everywhere with houses that are 10 feet apart. Personally, I don't want that. And I hope that people will fill out this survey and give the feelings or answer the questions as they see fit. There's going to be five different drop-in meetings from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, starting April 21st at Baden, Baden Conference Center, Falls Road. April 26th in New London, New London Community Center. Wednesday, April 27th in Norwood, at the Norwood Town Hall. Tuesday, May 3rd in Oakboro, at Oakboro Community Building, Oakboro Regional Park. And Wednesday, May the 4th, at Albemarle at the Jean McIntyre, this room. And Andy, is this on the county website?
Yes, sir.
If there are any way, I wish the newspaper were still here.
I say it's been shared on our, our social media sites as well, but it is on our website, you know. I know that typically the SNAP will pick up information. I know Bob, I believe Bob has contacted them as well.
Okay, I hope the newspaper does pick it up. And I hope the local radio station somehow picks it up. Because if there's an important meeting or important survey, I think that one right there is probably gonna be top of the list. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And follow up on what you just said, yeah, that, that, you know, when we commissioners sit in our board meetings and, and, and make decisions on what's gonna happen in Stanley County, that, that normally is pursuant to a comment where Andy, you know, County Manager Lucas will say, well, this is or is not in accordance with what the county's land use plan is, what the county has said they want to do. So if the county doesn't give us new feedback, we don't know what the county wants to do. That feedback is incredibly important. And it's very easy to do that survey. I did it about five minutes. Commissioner Alman?
Just like to ditto what Commissioner Lawhan said in regards to the land use plan and doing the survey. And also like to thank the commissioners again for your assistance tonight with the Josh Morton item that was on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Alman. County Manager Lucas, is there an opportunity, maybe, that we could do a presentation ceremony for Mr. Morton's family when the time comes?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. Once we get the plaques made for the outside and for the hallway, we'll, we'll do, we'll do that.
One, sir, thank you. That just leaves me. Thank you for reminding me, Commissioner Efer. The planning department is the one that shared that link on Facebook, that survey. And that's important because the planning department now has a Facebook page. And they do a lot of important stuff that people want to know about, and they often yell they didn't know about. Well, now we just have to let them know that the planning department has a Facebook page. They don't spam it with stuff that's not important. They just kind of stick to what they're doing. But, but they do a lot of important stuff that impacts a lot of us. So it's, you know, if you're on Facebook and you wanna know what's going on in your community, or what's about to maybe go on, that's probably one of the better pages to follow. And I believe it's called Stanley County Planning Department. Is that right, Andy?
That's correct.
County Manager Lucas gave us today, us commissioners, a little sneak peek at the Stanley County Report to the People. It's an annual report that we do. And, you know, it's gonna hit the newspaper. I think the SNAP's gonna give everybody a hard copy that gets the newspaper, right?
Yeah, it'll be inserted. Either, it'll be either this Saturday and Sunday, or the following Saturday. It's just a matter of when the printer.
And I just, I kinda wanted to take a minute and highlight a few things. It's quite a few pages long, but, but I, I wanna just tap into a few important ones. Things we accomplished in 2021. We finalized the design of a new 30,000 square foot trades-based educational facility at SCC. That's gonna teach training for electrical wiring, HVAC, plumbing, carpentry, machining, welding, auto repair, and auto, and auto mechanics. It's gonna take an already great school and expand the programs even, even more. So I'm personally excited about that. We did complete the 1.2 MG GD rehab of the West Stanley Waste Works Treatment Plant, and we've begun the 2.5 MG GD process. We began the capital planning for the sheriff's office, the 911 center, and the new emergency EOC. That's kind of awesome. That process is now officially underway. The airport, we, it's my comment the other day that, you know, you don't hear much about the airport and don't know what they do. Well, they drive a lot of business in Stanley County. And one of the ways that's represented is just in fuel cost. How many planes fly through here and buy fuel? And the jump between 20, 2020 and 2021 was a 28, or 29,000 gallon jump. We sold 98,964 gallons of fuel last year. That's a lot of fuel today at the airport. And every one of those planes flies in here, many of them stay, take a hotel for a couple days. They're here for business. They spend money at restaurants. They buy retail. So that's, it's great revenue. Good for the county. Our, just a few highlights from other departments, sheriff's office, and public safety, their calls went from 6,776 in 2020 to 9,403. It's a 50% boost in calls, call volume, almost in one year. And they're doing a good job of handling it. Civil debt collections went from 6,500 to 24,000. Pretty awesome. Criminal reports filed went from 3500 to 4,000. Stolen property recovered. I think that, I think that's a cool metric. It was 168,000 in 2020, was 373,000 in 2021.
Almost doubled.
Commissioner Lawhan normally likes to, to give this. I feel like I'm still in this thunder here when I, I say this. Please forgive me. Okay. But residential building permits throughout the year, sir, went from 337 in 2020 to 559. I mean, that's a huge jump. Residential remodels, additions, and alterations went from 213 to 282. Huge amount of money spent in remodeling and building in Stanley County last year. That's it. That's all I wanna share on that. I think all the other commissioners did a great job of, of sharing all the things I had on my mind, except I wanted to mention there is another ride this weekend as, as well. There's a memorial ride for the Special Olympics going on in Charlotte. If you were planning to ride in the Stanley County ride, that's great. That's amazing. That's awesome. For some reason, you wanna come up Charlotte Way, you can check my Facebook page. I'll have the information there. Thanks to all those that do participate in these rides, support these great causes, because, you know, it's a great way to raise money. That's it for me. If somebody's got anything further, I'd like to seek a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Lawhan, second by Commissioner Alman. Any, any opposed? All in favor, aye. Let's go.